Is it on? Can you hear me through this? Good evening. Welcome to the November 18th, 2024 Meeting of the Orange County School Board, and I now call this meeting to order. Ms. Byram, may we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson. Mrs. Dawson.
Here.
Mrs. Harrington.
Here.
Mrs. Quinturne.
Here.
Mr. Rickett.
Hi. Here.
Madam Vice Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Byram. Could we please join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are down to Item 1D, which is Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion or any changes, adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. And down to 2A, recognitions, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Hornick.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. And we'll begin this evening and like to bring Mr. Crystal forward from Orange County High School as well as Dr. Honnaker. And we have a special recognition this evening for our Teachers for Tomorrow program.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick and members of the board. We are so excited to come before you today to recognize an exciting new program that we had this year at Orange County High School. It is one of our CTE programs, and it is Teachers for Tomorrow. As we all know, we have a shortage of teachers across the state and nation. And so, one way that we are hoping to help our own school system is to kind of get more students interested in it and to hopefully grow some of our own and have them come back and teach here. And I would be remiss if, before I get started on this, I didn't say something about this gentleman here. Mr. Crystal, when asked if he would be willing to do this, readily said, "Yes, I would." But not only was there that, because he is a social studies teacher and a drama teacher, as you know, and not a CTE teacher. So at first, we thought, oh, you know, what kinds of certifications are we going to have to get for him to be able to, you know, teach this program? It didn't matter what we went and asked him to do, he was willing to do it. He gave up time over his summer, when he has a small one at home, to go and be trained and did a great job and came back, and this program is flourishing under his leadership. So, thank you for your willingness to step up and take this on and go through whatever training was required and just do a really nice job. So, I'm going to turn it over to Robbie, and why don't your students come up and stand
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I also appreciate you guys being willing to reschedule to National Education Week. That was very nice of you to schedule just this meeting for us. So, this program, these, we have 13 students, five with me tonight. They signed up for a completely separate class in the spring, and when they showed up, the class was, they were told that this is going to be Teachers for Tomorrow, which is a national program. They all jumped in readily, and they have been thriving, especially as we're rebuilding this program for the first time in about 10 years. Some highlights of what they've been learning, they've been going through lesson planning, they actually wrote a full lesson plan, some development stuff, classroom management, learning styles, so much more that they've been learning. They've all gotten Department of Social Services certified to recognize abuse and neglect, along with the, every employee in the school. They've spent 10 hours observing from Head Start to high school level, hours in every single room, they've wrote, they've observed, wrote reflections, discussed it. So far, they've spent about five hours in their field placement for the first semester, where they are all in, we have 12 in OES and one in Head Start, VPI, to work in the classrooms and get some experience. And then next semester, they'll be doing even more practical hours before they eventually take their praxis exam to be certified as IAs. These have just been an amazing group of students. I cannot say how much I've appreciated them, they've made me a better teacher, they've made me want to inspire the next generation, and I hope that these guys know how much I appreciate them and how much we all appreciate their hopeful, or their willingness to step up and be future teachers.
Could I ask? Could I? Could I ask them one question? Why do you, why do you want to be a teacher? Do it, do it. Just go for it.
I think, I think the few times I have gotten to teach people things, not necessarily school-related, but just in general in life, it feels fulfilling, it feels, it brings the kind of joy that I've never felt in anything else. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to make that my life.
Terrific. Thank you so much. That's excellent. We'll let them off the hook. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Way to take one for the team right there. Good job.
And so, Renee, I second those comments about Mr. Crystal. Robbie, thank you very much for your time. Students, thank you very much. It's a wonderful opportunity and a wonderful program, so thank you all for delving in with us. And Madam Chair, that's all this evening. Madam Vice Chair, that's all this evening for recognitions. Thank you.
All right, so we are down to Number 3A, which is Public Comment on the Capital Improvement and OCHS Expansion Projects. So if I could just start with our protocols. The Orange County School Board recognizes the importance of maintaining a respectful and orderly environment during school board meetings. Therefore, we kindly request that all comments made are relevant to the field of pre-K, 12 public education, and pertain to the matters concerning the school board and division. We ask that individuals refrain from using offensive language, engaging in vulgar or profane behavior, or making comments or taking actions that may incite violence or disrupt the peace. Unless otherwise authorized by the Chair, each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes to express their views. To uphold decorum, we also kindly request that applause, noise-making, or any other disruptive behavior be avoided before, during, and after a member of the public addresses the board. It is important to note that public comment is intended for addressing the school board, and therefore, comments should be directed solely towards the board members. Furthermore, it is expected that board members will refrain from engaging in dialogue with speakers during this time, as it is an opportunity for the board to actively listen to the thoughts, concerns, and feedback of the public. Any conduct that violates the established decorum and order as determined by the Chair or their designee may result in disciplinary action, including potential expulsion from the meeting. Alternatively, written comments may be submitted to board members via email. It is crucial to emphasize that these guidelines are not intended to restrict freedom of speech, but rather to ensure effective communication between the public and their public servants. We eagerly anticipate your valuable contributions and feedback. So I open Public Comment on Capital Improvement. Ms. Byram?
I will call people up three at a time, like we've been doing. So, the first three speakers are James Miller, Mary Lou Seelheimer, and Elizabeth Hall.
Good evening. For those of you who are not familiar with me, my name is James Miller. I'm a 2011 OCHS and BRVGS graduate. I am a former OCPS school employee. During my time, I taught 9th grade health and PE, earth science, I did school security, I coached football, boys tennis, and boys basketball. Presently, I am the Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Orange. I am in front of you tonight to shed light on the vital resource that the club is for the community and to encourage you to look at alternative locations for the new CTE site, which will be a great opportunity for the club and OCPS to further collaborate. The mission of Boys and Girls Club is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. Open 2 to 6:30 during the school year and 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. during the summer, the club serves kindergarten through 12th grade members and is available to all community families regardless of income. We provide a daily snack and then also breakfast and lunch during the summer. We run programming in our four program category areas of STEM, Character and Leadership, Healthy Lifestyles, and the Arts. Over the course of the past year, our members have competed in numerous STEM competitions, including taking third place at both our Regional U.S. Drone Soccer Match and third place at our Regional First LEGO League Robotics Tournament, which took place this past Saturday. We also teach vital life skills through our gardening, cooking, and anti-smoking and vaping programs. For our teen members, we offer career exploration programs such as Career Launch, Diplomas to Degrees, and Career Chats, where we visit various industries and learn what the jobs entail and what it takes to get to those positions. Beyond our general programming, the club provides families with a fun, safe, and positive environment for their kids. Supportive relationships with staff and peers creates opportunities otherwise not available to many kids in our community. We set expectations establishing fundamental attributes to being a successful adult. All of these things the club does are available to families for only $50 for the entire school year. Not $50 a week, not $50 a month, $50 for the entire school year. The location of the club at TAC is ideal for the community because we are able to provide meals through the kitchen, is conveniently located for parents to pick up and drop off in the town of Orange, including many of your own school faculty. There is classroom space for programming and gym and outdoor space to establish healthy habits. Also, with Head Start next door, many of our members have a smooth transition once they enter kindergarten because they are already familiar with the space. I encourage you to please reconsider displacing a vital community resource in the Boys and Girls Club and to instead utilize the space readily available at OCHS.
Good evening. I am Mary Lou Seelheimer, and I live in Orange County. I am a member of the Board of the Boys and Girls Club of Orange, and I have been actively involved in the Boys and Girls Club for more than 20 years, serving twice as President. Our club has been serving Orange County children and youth since 2001. Hundreds of children have benefited from club programs promoting academic success, good character, health and well-being, and leadership. Our latest program, Life and Workforce Readiness, includes career exploration, work-based learning, public speaking, and financial literacy. The children are safe, having fun, and thriving. And their parents are able to go to work, knowing that their children are enrolled in a meaningful, fun, and affordable after-school program. I came tonight because I am concerned that the Orange Boys and Girls Club could lose its home. I know that one of the options for the career and technical education facility is to take over the old Prospect Heights Middle School that currently houses the Orange County School Board, Head Start, and the Orange Boys and Girls Club. Each of these entities has invested time, energy, and money into adapting its space to its needs. Generous donors in our community have contributed funds to the Orange Boys and Girls Club to convert locker rooms into computer labs and art rooms, to install an all-new kitchen with appliances, shelving, and cupboards, and to convert other rooms into spaces for games and studying. If we lose our space, the cost of replacing it would be prohibitive, and there's a good chance the club would have to close. This is an unthinkable loss for our community. I am also here as an Orange County taxpayer, asking you to make the smart decision to vote to build the career and technical education building at the high school. It is the right decision because it would not disrupt the school board, Head Start, and the Boys and Girls Club, and because the students would not have to be bussed back and forth to another location to attend classes, and because the cost of the new building at the high school would be less than repurposing this building. So please allow the Orange Boys and Girls Club to remain in our home. We have benefited from years of a successful partnership with Orange County school, public schools, and we so appreciate Dr. Hornick, the faculty, the administration, and the school board for their efforts on behalf of the kids and their families.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Hall, and I'm a resident of Orange County. My husband and I are enthusiastic supporters of the Boys and Girls Club of Orange. The club is so important to the residents of Orange and has a long, successful partnership with Orange County Public Schools. I oppose moving CTE to TAC. We urge you to accept Dr. Hornick's proposal, which would be the most beneficial, sensible, and cost-effective decision for the citizens of Orange County. Thank you, Dr. Hornick, faculty, administrators, and school board members for your work on behalf of the children and the families. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Katie Hand, Joyce Bosworth, and Leslie Foster.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. My name is Katie Hand, and I'm a resident of Orange, Virginia. I'm also a member of the Advisory Board of the Boys and Girls Club of Orange. I've been involved with the club almost for nearly eight years. When my family moved here to the area, we inquired about a strong organization to become a part of. As a professional, I work with nonprofit organizations and have for the past 30 years. In getting to know the Boys and Girls Club of Orange, I was deeply impressed and continue to be. I, the, the strength and the breadth of their programming is astounding, the oversight, the premium placed on staff excellence and staff development, all continue to inspire my work on behalf of the organization. I'm sure you're aware that for many boards, there's a term of three years, and then you have the opportunity to move on. You really don't see that with our board. We are so inspired by the work, the mission, and being able to be a part of this incredible, incredibly special place. Finally, my son was at Prospect a couple of years ago, and so, he had the opportunity to go to the club during times when he wasn't involved in a sport after school. And so, I was also able to experience the club from the standpoint of a parent and through my son's eyes. And I can tell you that I had a feeling that I'm sure so many parents have, and that's of gratitude, that this resource was available to my son. I'm sure that all of the parents' reasons for being grateful differ, but I can tell you, it filled a very special need and place in our family's life. I also remember having a recurring thought that, as a community, we are so fortunate to have this treasure amongst us and for families to benefit from. And I, I still feel very much that way. The longer that I have the privilege of supporting the club in any way, the more deeply I feel that. And so, I guess I'd just like to close by saying, I hope we can maintain this fantastic initiative as it is, and I'd like to thank each one of you for enabling this partnership that has been so strong.
Good evening. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I also want to thank you for the recent informational session that you held regarding the CTE options. My name is Joyce Lumsden Bosworth. I'm a lifelong resident of Orange County, a retired Orange County Public Schools teacher, and an Advisory Board member of the Boys and Girls Club. I'm here tonight to show support for building a cost-effective CTE program that is on the OCHS campus. All of the research I conducted, including significant information from the Orange County Public Schools, supports CTE at the high school. The reason the former CTE programming at Piedmont Technical School was disbanded many years ago was due to the drawbacks of sending students off-campus. It is sad that it has taken this long to create another good CTE option for our students. At this time, we need to keep from repeating the mistakes of the past and keep CTE programming at the high school. The best option at OCHS that can be agreed upon at this time is a plan proposed by Dr. Hornick to build a cost-effective building on the high school grounds. However, I agree with the consultant that provided guidance to the board regarding this decision, which found that the best option would be to purchase the wall property and build and renovate there. The results of the feasibility study were presented to the school board on December 8th, 2023. The problem with choosing the best option is the fact that the Board of Supervisors has stated that they do not approve, will not approve purchasing the property that is contiguous with the high school. Since your hands have been tied, you must now choose the second-best option, the one proposed by Dr. Hornick. I am also here tonight to express support for preschool programs, Head Start, and Boys and Girls Club. If a decision is made to put CTE at TAC, those programs will not, will be put in jeopardy. Orange County has had an innovative and excellent Head Start program for approximately 50 years. I spent the bulk of my career teaching preschool special education. I work closely with the Head Start program and can confidently say that our county has been blessed by having strong preschool programs for our youngest students. Also, as a former early childhood educator, I can confidently say that the Boys and Girls Club is making a huge difference in the lives of our students and families. My job in the classroom was easier when I taught club children. They got excellent care in the afternoons that supported their academic and their social and behavioral skills. Please do not force these programs from their current space with no plan for their continuance. The space used by these programs has been renovated inside and outside to meet their unique needs. It would not be cost-effective to move and renovate them. And the Boys and Girls Club space was renovated by community volunteers who provided significant funds for those renovations. In closing, I hope that you will make a common sense and best practice choice by putting CTE at the high school, and I apologize for being long-winded. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Foster. I'm an Orange County landowner and have been a member of the Boys and Girls Club Advisory Board since 2019. I applaud Dr. Hornick and the members of the school board for your service to the youth of Orange, and I applaud the initiative to build a CTE facility to let our, to set our young people up for success. This, too, is the goal of the Boys and Girls Club, to help the kids in our community reach their full potential. I think all of us here tonight would agree, there's no better investment in our community than investing in the future of our young people. The issue at hand tonight is where to locate the CTE. I'm here to advocate for locating it at the high school and not in this building, which has been home to the Boys and Girls Club since 2001. For more than two decades, our community has poured resources, time, and love into creating the Boys and Girls Club in this location. To lose the space we've invested in so heavily in financially and emotionally would be a devastating setback for the club and the families it serves. It seems evident there is one elegant solution to the issue at hand tonight. In the realm of science, an elegant solution is an actual term. By definition, it's a solution that is simple, effective, and insightful in addressing a problem. It's a solution that is technically sound and easy to understand or implement. It's a solution that uses fewer resources and finds shortcuts to avoid unnecessary steps. The opposite is a solution that tends to be complex, cumbersome, or resource, resource-intensive, involving numerous steps and redundant processes. So tonight, on behalf of the kids and families of Orange who depend on the Boys and Girls Club and Head Start, we ask the school board to vote unanimously for the elegant solution to keep the club where it is and build the CTE at the high school. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Marta Buzelli, Mary Lou Sponsky, and Suzanne Sherwin.
Hello, my name is Marta Buzelli. I am also a board member at the Boys and Girls Club. I have not lived here as long as several of our speakers have. I got here, I took a circuitous route through the entire United States to get here. I moved here from California. I've lived in Pittsburgh, I've lived in California, I've lived in DC. This is the smallest and by far the most generous and giving community I have lived in, and I'm really proud to live here. I would just like to say that I, I've been involved with Head Start a little bit and with, of course, with Boys and Girls Club, and I see the CTE community center as the end of a spectrum, where we start with the preschool kids, and then we get them out the door and get them jobs. And to me, that is the most important thing, is that we all work together, like I see this community do every day. And I just want to give this group a motto from the Boys and Girls Club. Great futures start in orange.
Thank you. My comments will be brief. My name is Mary Lou Sponsky. I've been a member of the Board of the Orange Boys and Girls Club for 24 years, from, from the very beginning. This club came to be because the wife of a pastor of one of Orange's churches was concerned that she saw children hanging out in the food line parking lot every afternoon after school because they did not have a safe place to go. It was her intention to create that safe space. Today, the club exists for that space, for that safety. One of my most remembered memories of the year we opened was when the father of three little boys came to us, a single father of three little boys. little boys came to us, a single father of three little boys, the oldest with seven. He had no place for those boys after school. He came to us, we provided the safe space for those boys. That is our mission, a safe and supportive place in this community, in this building, for the children of Orange County and their parents, their families, when it is needed.
Hi. My name is Suzanne Sherwin. I'm an Orange County resident. I've served on the Advisory Board for the Boys and Girls Club of Orange since 2015 in a lot of different capacities. I support for the CTE site to be at the high school as the most cost-effective and most efficient option. I am grateful for and would like to preserve the longstanding and successful relationship between Orange County Public Schools and the Boys and Girls Club of Orange. I'd like to thank Dr. Hornick, faculty, staff, the school board members for their work on behalf of the kids and their families of Orange County.
The next three speakers are Markie Smith, Sarah Jaeger, and Debbie Corbin.
Hello, all. I'm Markiana Smith. I'm a Barbersville resident. I am a graduate of Orange County High School in 2015. I am an advisory council member of the Boys and Girls Club. But to me, the most important thing is I am a Boys and Girls Club alum member. So I grew up at the Boys and Girls Club. And that is so important to me because I am a product of everyone's stories here tonight. The Boys and Girls Club, I would not be standing here today without the Boys and Girls Club. When I was at the Boys and Girls Club, I got the amazing opportunity to go to the White House. And if you can imagine a young girl going to the White House and seeing outside of her small little town, you don't know what you can be until you see it. And so getting to stand in the White House and thinking to yourself, "That could be me one day," right? And so the Boys and Girls gave me an opportunity to be safe, have a safe place to go after school. My mother was never worried where I was because the location of the Boys and Girls Club, longstanding, has been the TAC building. I went to Prospect Heights Middle School where I would walk over every day. Accounts, a student, students there would walk us over, and we'd go to the programs at the Boys and Girls Club, and we learned so much from one another. I got to see myselfs in the staff there. They taught me how to be a strong, independent woman. They taught me how to stand up for myself, give myself a voice, and I wouldn't be here without the Boys and Girls Club. So my, I stand here today asking that we, the longstanding relationship with the school board and the Orange County Public Schools and the Boys and Girls Club continue, and the Boys and Girls Club can stay at the TAC building.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick and members of the board. I appreciate your desire to actively seek more public input and encourage awareness of location options for a CTE building that has been identified as needed and discussed for far too many years without any tangible progress. I hope that you will take immediate action tonight via vote after public comment so that construction can commence on this facility many of you promised to prioritize in your campaigns. After speaking with members of the Board of Supervisors, it is my understanding that they unanimously support and have set aside the funds for a prefab CTE building set directly on campus. I'm not sure why this exercise in continuing to discuss locations, options is even necessary, but for the public appearance that you value and will heed the desires of residents. Alternatively, could some board members' personal opinions on a location lead them to try to gather support for their vision, even if it defies common sense? I appreciate the desire to try to persuade public officials higher than yourselves to change their funding priorities, but fear that disagreement and further attempted compromise or discussion will only delay the long overdue action needed to finally build a CTE center for Orange County students. Personally, I initially thought that renovations of the wall building would be the best option for a CTE center at the high school. After reviewing all the details, costs, and building timetables, I now agree that the newer proposed Option G of a prefab CTE building on the unused softball practice field is the least expensive, fastest to implement, and least disruptive to school grounds, primarily parking spaces. This facility would also accommodate the full breadth of CTE classes desired for preparing students to go immediately into the workforce after graduation. I vehemently oppose displacing Head Start, the Boys and Girls Club, and administrative offices here at TAC. With current growth projections in Northern Orange, it appears that a new high school won't be needed until OCHS reaches a capacity higher than 2,000 students. With current enrollment under 1,500, this threshold may not be met for several more decades. Further down the road, when a new school close to Lake of the Woods is actually needed, the design plans should include its own CTE facilities. Thus, a facility halfway between the two locations is illogical. I appreciate that this was not even one of the options presented in your public CTE informational session. It should be a no-brainer that the school board votes tonight to take action on implementing Option G, so that you may immediately proceed with building the facility as quickly as possible. You do have a quorum present tonight. You can take action rather than continuing to kick the proverbial can.
I have a 10-year-old that goes to Gordon Barber School. He has attended Boys and Girls Club Head Start for about five or six years. I think that's the best place that he needs to be in the afternoon after school. They help him with all of his activities. He has grown and matured a lot since he's come to live with me, and I just don't think moving Boys and Girls Club or Head Start out of the building to put a tech building thing in here is appropriate. Put him at the high school. That way, when he goes there, they'll all be right there at him. I think that would be the best thing for everyone involved. And like they said, in the summertime, they're a good opportunity for the kids, the staff, and they just support all the kids, not just one individually, all of them. Thank you.
And the final speaker for the CTE public comment is Ms. Kim Hoosier.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity for public comment. On November 7th, I attended the publicly advertised roundtable held by the Orange County School Board and sanctioned by Orange County Public Schools. I was excited to learn more about how the board was going to proceed with the specific CTE plan and to have an open dialogue about the most feasible building options. Unfortunately, this is not what happened. I did ask Ms. Quinn Turn when the roundtable would begin and was informed that she was not aware of the format of the event and that this was organized by Ms. Anderson. I also asked other school board members who agreed that Ms. Quinn Turn, agreed with Ms. Quinn Turn that this meeting's format was organized and implemented by Ms. Anderson and that the other members did not know what to expect from the meeting. This was very confusing in that the event was advertised as an Orange County School Board event. However, it seems like the event was only organized by one member of the board without the input or knowledge of other members. How does this happen? This was not advertised as Ms. Anderson's event, but rather an event on behalf of the entire school board and OCPS. This now seems like the second time that Ms. Anderson has misused public resources to support her private interest events or agenda. Again, how and why is this allowed to continue? Moreover, this event was advertised as a roundtable. From my understanding, a roundtable event means that there is an open discussion around a particular issue. For the sake of everyone's time and resources, events advertised under the umbrella of the Orange County Public School Board should be an event that all members of the board have input in and actually be an event as advertised. Despite these facts, I did walk around the tables, and after perusing the plans and finding out a little bit more information of time, cost, and feasibility, the obvious option would be to go with Plan G, which has the CTE building at the high school. I am a bit shocked that there is still an ongoing discussion about locating the CTE building in the TAC building, which would greatly disrupt Head Start and the Boys and Girls Club, which are both vital community resources. And the fact that it is off the OCHS campus is completely illogical. Discussions around CTE began when my oldest son started elementary school. He is now finishing college. The time is now to support building the CTE structure, and the only logical option is Option G.
That's all the speakers in this section. All right. Thank you all for coming to share your thoughts, and I close that portion of public comment and reopen public comment for general comments. Do we have anyone signed up, Ms. Byram? Yes, we have one speaker in general, and that's Ms. Alyssa Waller.
I could have actually just been with the others. Good evening, OC School Board and all in attendance. After recent events, I found myself wondering why should I continue to engage in explaining historical facts or what I believe are important advocacy points regarding our staff and students? I was reminded of the words from the late, great Senator John Lewis. Do not get lost in a sea of despair. Be hopeful. Be optimistic. Our struggle is not the struggle of a day, a week, a month, or a year. It is a struggle of a lifetime. Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble. Although I wanted to present for Indigenous History Month and give information regarding the indigenous population that were here well before Columbus, we have the matter of CTE expansion at hand. So I stand before you, the troublemaker, the fact-checker, and possibly a thorn in your side, so I've been told, but I won't be remembered as someone who stood by and did nothing. I completely oppose any plan that would cause displacement of the Boys and Girls Club, Head Start, or admin offices here at TAC. I was initially concerned about the federal funding of Head Start, but after investigating, I found out that the placing of Head Start would not affect its federal funding, but it could impact the program's expenses. TAC provides a space for Boys and Girls Club as a contribution for the benefit, for the benefits the program brings to our community. Many families rely on Boys and Girls Club as a safe place for their children to attend after school or in the summer while they work at an affordable rate compared to other options like private daycare or before and after-school programs. Moving Head Start could increase the program's expenses. If it has to relocate to another space that may or may not require renovations, please tell me where is that funding coming from? If a new facility needs to be built from ground up, where is that coming from? I don't see any feasible options mentioned for the relocation of either program or office spaces. I've heard this board discuss cutting costs or wanting to investigate where monies are going or could be better spent. Displacing Boys and Girls Club, Head Start, or admin offices doesn't appear to be the best option, in my understanding. Our Board of Supervisors are in support of constructing a building being placed behind the high school where the old practice softball field used to be. If I'm being honest, this was not my first choice. I was initially supporting the purchase of the wall building. I believe that was Plan F. However, the Board of Supervisors has stated we don't have the funding for that option. Granted, I have no engineering or construction background. I do, however, know the importance of Head Start and the Boys and Girls Club. We must support them and their needs to continue the journey of what's best for our students. I urge each of you, when submitting your vote, consider the repercussions of displacing these programs in our administrative offices and choose the more feasible option of constructing a CTE building behind the OCHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller, and we have no other speakers, correct, Ms. Byram? All right, so I will close public comment. All right, moving on, we are down to Item 4A, the cassette consent agenda, and I would seek a motion.
Madam Vice Chair, I move to approve the October 2024 financial report, the October 2024 monthly operating bills, the food service report, and the draft 2024, May 20th, 2024 minutes as well.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Moving along, Section 5A, consideration of the overnight field trip request.
Yes, ma'am. This is a field trip request to come to us from Orange County High School, the wrestling program. It is a overnight tournament in Mechanicsville over the winter break, and we would like to seek your approval to allow our wrestlers to attend this tournament.
Do we have a cost for that? I don't see anything attached.
I don't know what it is offhand.
They didn't send that over. I can back this up. Paid by the athletics fund, but they didn't send it over.
So, to clarify, it doesn't come from our budget, the school board budget, essentially?
It'll either be paid out of our operating, out of their account, or it'll come from activity funds, the activity account.
All right, my understanding is this needs approval tonight, so do we have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion further?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Madam Chair, may I make a point of information briefly? I know that we have a lot of amazing people that came out tonight to provide public comment and also to be part of the discussion on CTE, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, we are not having an action on this evening. We want to make sure that all of our board members are here. So I believe we're going to put it back on the agenda for our next board meeting.
That's my understanding.
I just wanted to let you know, so you didn't sit out there all, all meeting, waiting for it.
Would you like to take a two-minute recess, or do you want to hang out with us for the rest of the night? Two-minute recess, done. Thank you for coming.
Madam Vice Chair, I would, I had some comments that I would like the public to... I was going to wait until a board member comments.
All right, if you'll pause for just a minute, please. Ms. Quinn Turn has shared that she does have some comments to make during board comment time, so if you're interested in that, maybe you don't want the two-minute recess. Thank you.
With that, Madam Vice Chair, should we move to amend the agenda, the way we could share? I don't know how you would like to, like to do that, but...
I think for the sake of those who came tonight for that particular discussion, it would make a lot of sense to move that item forward, so you don't have to wait through all the rest of it. So if someone, are you making that motion?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we will move board comment to now.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I did want to address a couple of things. I've heard a lot of trending themes, and I think that we are all on board with not, and I don't mean to speak for the board, but I do believe that in individual discussions, we are all on board with not moving any current programs with any of the plans. I think that there has been a lot of misinformation and a lot of misunderstandings with different plans moving forward. And again, I don't believe we're at any point to make a vote on anything because we, we don't, we simply don't have enough information. The building here would not require the moving of any programs currently offered. That includes Boys and Girls Club, Head Start, or administration. I agree that we need to keep from repeating the mistakes of the past, and that means that I don't think that we should be continuing to piecemeal things together to, to kick the can down the road, the proverbial can. I think that there's a better plan at hand, and I would like opportunity to present that maybe at the next meeting. And that would include locating a CTE facility at a high school campus. Great futures do start in orange, and safety is a big part of that, and I don't believe any of the plans that are currently presented are a safe option either. At the roundtable, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting regarding planning and how that was going to go. The consensus was that staff, at least my understanding, would prepare a presentation, but Chair Anderson did not want staff to have an added burden to their already heavy duties. So Chair Anderson volunteered her time, so I wanted to thank publicly Ms. Anderson for volunteering her time and putting that, that public event offered by the school board together. I think there is a great opportunity to have a future roundtable discussion, and I think, depending on how the board feels, I do feel that that's an appropriate next step. But again, displacing administration, Boys and Girls Club, or Head Start, I think, is also non-negotiable, so I wanted to put some of those fears at ease. And my last comment, again, is where does this funding come from? We have never once been presented where this money is... We have never once been presented where this money is going to be coming from, and I think that's an important piece to the plans moving forward. So that's all I had on this item, Madam Vice Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My understanding, I believe this started in 2013?
Nine.
2009, and then we had a subsequent master plan that was developed in 2013. This board has been discussing this over the past year. We're coming up on a year now. I think we are doing a grave disservice not to go forward, not to listen to our constituents, not to listen to our superintendent, not to take into consideration the money that has been spent to already look into the different options. I absolutely am opposed to the Boys and Girls Club or Head Start being relocated or moved. As we said earlier, as I said earlier, we chose tonight that we will not take action because we feel we should have all of our members here. This is such an important thing, but we don't want to continue delaying it. Ms. Anderson did put on the roundtable. It was not truly an event coordinated through the public school system. It was something that she chose to do, and I would commend her for at least giving us all of the options out there to look at, even though we didn't have a roundtable discussion as some of us may have hoped for. It seems to me that when we are not being provided the answers that we may want, we are trying to find other ways to approach the question and to divert and to distract and to continue to delay something that needs to be taken into consideration and the process started immediately. I believe we do know that the board of supervisors has earmarked and/or dedicated a certain amount of money to help us go forward with this single-story, 30,000-square-foot building, prefab building at the current high school location. So there are a lot of things that we agree on at this board. Those are my positions, and I hope that at our next board meeting that we do the constituency right and we take action with definitely taking into consideration all of the public feedback that we have received.
Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I was very happy to hear you say adamantly, Boys and Girls Club, Head Start, not being touched. So thank you all for coming and speaking and giving the history of the Boys and Girls Club when it was founded. I am personally connected to the Boys and Girls Club, as most of you know, so that's exciting. Your concerns were valid as well. 30,000 square feet facility is what we need for a CTE building. We cannot find 30,000 square feet in this location without doing something, so it seems like we clarified that a little bit. Point two, the committees, the school board and the supervisors work closely and were broken up into committees. I sit on the CEIP CTE committee with Ms. Anderson, and we have had numerous meetings with our counterparts, with the supervisors. We have been assured that the funding is available based on the recommendation from our superintendent with two goals really. Number one, capacity at the high school. Worried about, Dr. Hornick will correct me if I'm wrong, about 95% capacity at the high school. We can pick up about, Dr. Hornick, eight, 10 classrooms, correct?
That would be the hope, yes sir.
Okay, so 200 roughly students, which then helps us understand we do not need to build a second high school or a new high school. So it helps us from that standpoint. And then obviously, the biggest piece is our young people that do not want to go to a four-year school, we are absolutely letting them down in a big, big way. Our surrounding counties are doing this and they're doing it well. Louise is on their second phase, which they're getting ready to build another building, and we've been talking about one since 2009. Finally, I know all you guys want to go home, there is no perfect plan. That's the problem, again, I sat in the seat up here as part of government, but the frustration from the people about government is you can't ever get anything done, okay? There is no perfect plan. There isn't. All we can do is take the information that we have today in front of us, make the best possible decision that we can, and move this thing forward. We need to move this forward. Again, thank you all for coming tonight. Really appreciate it. Great to see everyone.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we will take that two-minute recess, so you have time to leave if you'd like to, and again, we thank you for coming and sharing. All right, I do believe we are down to item 6A, superintendent's recommendations, so we will turn that over to Dr. Hornick.
Yes ma'am, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to bring Lisa forward, and we have a series of supplemental appropriations for a security grant, Office of School Quality Grant, which is a grant for Locust Grove Primary School, American Rescue Plan. I can tell you that number one and three on this list are both essentially because other school divisions across the Commonwealth did not expend their money completely, so it was brought back into a centralized pot of money and then redistributed out to school divisions that did spend their money. So this is where some money's coming back to us for the security equipment and the American Rescue Plan. Of course, the Office of School Quality Grant is something that we applied for and were able to acquire on behalf of Locust Grove Primary School. And then Lisa and Baby Judy, et cetera, I'd like you guys to speak through the Title One and the Title Two.
Title One and Title Two are funding that we have received in addition, so we wanted to get that approved as well. The Title One grant is the 370K and Title Two, the extra funds are 17.5.
So that's funding we have received above and beyond what we had budgeted for?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll double check that. Look. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on the other ones?
Do we have these earmarked for anything? Or are you waiting for approval?
We're waiting on approval. Now, Title One and Title Two, of course, some of those, yes.
The parameters of the grant.
Yes, and I believe the 10K has pretty much already been accounted for as well, so. And the security equipment. Go ahead.
Just want to make sure, on the Title One and Title Two grants, those are not revenue that's coming in to pay for what we've already spent? That's not...because sometimes some of the federal grants, you spend your money and then they pay you back. That's not what this is.
So we had spent some funds of the SRF funds, so we have extra money from Title One and Title Two that is left over that we will be getting, then we will expend it. Some of it has been expended. We're waiting for to move the funds, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then for the local matches, that already been discussed with the county administrators? It looks like there was a 25% requirement for the security equipment.
Those projects have already been complete.
Yes.
Right, so this is actually from 2022, because we were not the beneficiary of a security grant last year.
Correct.
And so I think the plan is to essentially apply this to projects that have been completed.
Had already taken, yes.
So the match has already been made?
Correct, yes ma'am.
Make a motion to approve supplemental appropriations totaling $450,563.50.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lisa. And then next I'll bring Mr. Hill. Greg, if you come forward, he has a list of some surplus technology. We would like to get this out on the market. Some of it, we will be able to recover some money for as well. Greg, I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely, so we are on a four-year replacement cycle with our teacher devices. You'll see those at the bottom of the list are the MacBooks. Those do have still value to them because they're only four-year-old items, so we are really hoping to get those out and get monies back so we can apply that towards our new replacement cycle coming up for next year. So we've broken it down into better chunks so that we're not always trying to buy a huge amount of devices, so those monies will be applied towards that. The other items, some are just broken items, others are obsolete, but we do get a marginal amount for a lot of the things that we put on our surplus list.
Greg, I always appreciate your attention to detail and then just kind of thinking outside the box as far as understanding you have some things with some value and then, you know, what to do with it. So, you know, always appreciate that, you know, about you and every time we have a conversation. So I don't know if this is something you're shooting for, because this is the second or third time that we've seen you with, you know, these items, so, you know, maybe quarterly. I guess that's your plan, but thanks for all you do, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, makes sense.
Do we need something on this?
Motion.
It's an action for December 9th, but if we want, if we choose to do it tonight, we can...
I'll move to declare the technology equipment as surplus property for disposal as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. That helps us get the process underway.
Next one, Sandy. Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
And I know that Mr. Sedano and Dr. Brooking and Ms. Patera were really hopeful to have a large audience to present the next one.
Well, I know we have...
But the sheriff is here, so he's keeping a close eye, and he is...
Earlier presentation too, so...
Yes, so this better be high-quality, Nick, or we're going to have to have him address you. So in our strategic plan, we have five umbrella areas, and the board has been the recipient of four targeted strategic plan updates in the four other areas, and we like to bring the fifth one to you. And this is going to be essentially a two-part presentation. It will, thematically, it all fits under this update. So Nick and Nora and Ellen are going to provide an update on the, basically, our community support, our stakeholder engagement, and within that work on the strategic plan, there was quite a bit of discussion about facility upgrades, improvements, as well as discussion about the future of CTE. And so when we get to the December 9th meeting, we have a very robust presentation for the board that will cover the last five years and all of the capital improvement and facility upgrades we have done at each of our sites, including Porterfield Park. And so we even had to retain the services of Mr. Arnold to come back to help us compile much of the historical informations from the 2018-2019 school year. And so this is kind of part one, where we really focus on high level of where we stand within the strategic plan, and then we will get into a nuts and bolts component of what we have done specifically for facilities when we get to the next meeting. So also, I know Ms. Hoover has spent quite a bit of time assisting. Bree is a math teacher extraordinaire at Orange County High School and is completing her master's programming, completing her programming to become an administrator, a school administrator, and I happen to think that she would make a very fine one, but she spent a lot of time to gather, to get hours and experience doing this work, working with Judy. So Judy, thanks a lot as well for working with Bree. Bree, thank you for your time that you've invested in this. You're a really important part of what we do here in Orange, and so I just wanted to publicly give you credit where credit is due. And Nick and Nora and Ellen, I will turn it over to you. Thank you guys as well. Nick, this, Nick was the team leader for this specific component of the strategic plan, so thank you, Nick, as well for your time a year and a half ago, leading that group as well.
No problem. Thank you, Dr. Hornick, Madam Chair, virtually maybe, and members of the board. So thank you for being here tonight as we provide the update on our community and stakeholder engagement portion of the strategic plan. And as Dr. Hornick said, this one, as we were building it, was a bear. This one contains a lot of various pieces that we wanted to pick apart and a lot to draw into, so we're going to dig into that here in a second as we provide our update. If we can go to the next slide. So this Orange County Public School mission statement, you're well aware of the mission statement, but I do want to draw attention to that really quick in that that was a product of the strategic action. The Strategic Planning Committee revised our county's mission statement, which drives our work every day and what we do. So this mission, what we aim to do, is also a product of that work that we did a year and a half ago, so. Moving on though, as Dr. Hornick said, there were five areas of the strategic plan, and you've already heard about instructional programming, safe learning environments, staff recruitment and retention, as well as technology today. As you know, we're here to talk about stakeholder engagement and support. And so, as you know, I was the team member, or the team leader of this. Dr. Brooking and Ellen Patera were instrumental as well as, as Dr. Hornick said, Ms. Breanna Hoover in helping prepare this presentation for you tonight. This action plan that we're going to describe to you is a work in progress. This is work that's going to occur over many years. We're a year and a half into this process and therefore many things have been done, but it is still a work in progress, so we just wanted to point that out at the outset. All right. Ms. Byram, the objective for stakeholder and community engagement was such that Orange County Public Schools will ensure that all students benefit from a variety of community partnerships that support their educational, career, and extracurricular pursuits. So that's a big one. We took that apart and we're not talking just about community partnerships and family and student engagement. We're talking about supporting students' educations, their careers, and their extracurricular pursuits. So that's... So, that's the whole child right there and a lot to update on. So, this has four specific strategy areas. The first one that we're going to talk about is workforce readiness. And, well, actually, go back. I want to just update those four real quick. So, we have four strategies. There's workforce readiness, which, as you know, that's going to deal with our CTE programs, which are a hot topic tonight. Family engagement, community partnerships, and then finally, extracurricular opportunities. So, to start for, Dr. Brooking is going, or Ellen is going to talk about workforce readiness.
Well, as you know, I could talk about this for a long time, so I'll try to be brief if you need to go like that if I'm going on. Just feel free to do that. So, the first part of Strategy One is developing a K-12 career readiness plan, which means we're not just talking to high school kids about their careers. We're starting in kindergarten and going all the way up. So, if, are you able to go over to the county website and it'll show you some?
It's hyperlink.
Oh, it's hyperlink. Oh, it's hyperlink. Okay. Good thing there's not a lot of people here, so. No one's looking, Laura. Don't worry.
At the top.
So, go to Strategy One. Keep going. So, click on the plus sign at number one, and then you'll, yeah, and then it'll scroll up. Okay, so, we have several college partnerships with University of Mary Washington, Germana. Students are taking classes in high school that are being counted towards college. That's a general overview of that section. If you click over to the next one, this fall, we had our first career day for sixth graders. We had a huge success with that. If you're interested in watching that video, that just shows you all the different businesses that participated. It was a lot of fun, and sixth graders gave us tremendous amount of feedback, so next year is going to be even greater. If you scroll down, there is.
No rain, though, right?
What's, no rain next year? No, definitely no rain. This is a series that I've been working on for the last couple of years I've been having this job, and it's called What Do People Do All Day? It's based on Richard Scary's book, and it goes to different business owners and talks about what do you do? How do you make a living? What do you love about your job? What advice do you have for high school students who may be doing this? So, if you've got a couple hours, maybe not that long, but go through and look at them. They're really interesting. They're all people around here, and there's also some, like, this is Carrie who graduated from Orange County High School and has got a business on her own, not in Orange, but it's online, so virtual. So, anyway, a lot of cool information there. You can scroll back up and then go over. Work-based learning is what we're finding in high school. This, I'm going to go into this a little bit later, but this is the internships and work-based learning, when basically, students are going off-campus to get a learning experience that is connected with a class that they're taking or a passion that they have. So, I'm going to come back to that. I don't think there's anything underneath that, Laura, but you can check. All right, well, it goes hand-in-hand with the CTE program. Those are all the classes in the CTE and all those pathways that give kids a bounce up to their career. You can go back up and over. And Zello is a platform that students use, starting in middle school and going up to high school, that just helps them, if they don't have an idea what they're doing, it just kind of helps them think, think through it with their guidance counselors. You can scroll up a little bit. Again, CTE programming, keep going. And there's a, this is the job fair, and in connection with the job fair is a job cafe. Job cafe gives students practice interviewing with employers. Sandy was there last year, interviewing, or the year before. I can't remember, both years, maybe. Just, it's, it's supposed to be a little bit of stress, but not too much stress, so they understand what it feels like. And then they go to the job fair, and they are hoping to get, go to the next step, which would be to secure a real interview, and then the high school teachers have prepared them for that as well. So, little baby steps, getting to the career there.
Kids just did an amazing job.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, they're very well-prepared, so it's fun to see that. And there's our video, What Do People Do All Day, again. Now, we can go to the next, number two. So, a lot of, a lot of my job is, it says, go, yeah, go, there we go, is, it says, survey local business, but it doesn't mean like actually sending them out a Google survey. It means talking to them. And this is a big part of my job, where I'm going out to business owners and figuring out what are your needs? How can a student support you? How could you support them? It's this ongoing relationship that happens. And some businesses are ready to take an intern, and that's like the top of the pyramid there. And some of them are just ready to come in and maybe do a job cafe interview, or maybe come in and speak to a class, or maybe come to a kindergarten class and let them know what they do in terms of career. So, this is an ongoing thing that it just, it's, I do it every day with connecting and networking. You can go down to number three. So, again, similar things that are happening and getting students to be thinking about careers, kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. You can go up to, well, scroll down to the next one, because I'm going to go, I'm going to talk more about the internships in just a second in the next slide. So, like I was just saying, how we're surveying businesses, talking to them all the time. A big thing that I've been working on is expanding the opportunities that students have to be outside of the school building. I think in the past, it's just sort of letting kids go at any time, but we've really tried to tighten it up to make sure that students are taking a class that correlates with what they want to do in terms of jobs. So, last semester, we had our first eight interns. That was very exciting to get that off the ground. This semester, we have 17 interns, so it's a big jump in the numbers, and I'm super proud of these students. They're really taking it seriously, and they are learning and learning and learning. And it's not just go do your job and stock the shelf and do whatever you need to do, important things, but it's more of a mentorship. So, they're really understanding the business, and they're understanding all the little things that go behind it. If you want to just go to the next slide, the next, under the goal, you can scroll down there, it talks about CTE, but I think we've had enough conversation about that tonight. We can save that for next month. But if you go to the next slide on the, on the Google form that Bree made.
Oh, the present, back to the presentation.
Yeah. I have some pictures for you, and I'm going to tell you a few things. Keep going. There it is. So, I'm just going to tell you, highlight five of these students. Again, I could go on all night, but y'all need to give me the, you know, stop talking thing. On the top left, in the maroon shirt, we have Damian, who actually started at Piedmont Power, and he is, he is my agriculture guy. So, he's going from a few different places throughout his school year, where he is getting some really good mentorship in agriculture. So, here, he's learning basically what you can see, how to fix different problems that occur on tractors. He is now, he wants to do some welding, so we're going to get him connected with that. And he also is working on an actual farm and, and learning about the reproductive side of how to increase your, your stock of cattle. So, he's getting mentored by a young farmer in the area now, right in this section of his job, and he's learning a lot. In the middle is Olivia. She is working over at Brightside, and Dory and Greg Boggs are incredible mentors to her. She wants to go into education, and so she wanted to spend time, at Brightside, she can spend time with the littlest and up to the elementary school age, and so she's really enjoying actually being with the kids, not just reading about it, but being with them. The top right, you have Janelle and Jayden, and they are culinary interns, and on Mondays, they go and hang out with Jennifer Briington. This is them at the state fair. They won first and second place in the grilled cheese competition, which we're very proud of. We had a lot of fun taking them down there. And then, so Monday, they're with Jennifer, and then for the rest of the week, they're doing some community service, and they're also working in restaurants like Main Street Tavern, Spoon and Spindle, and right now, they are at Fork Down Main. So, they're, they're getting the actual restaurant experience and doing a lot of really neat things. Bottom left is Seamus in the striped shirt, and he, right there is working with Jeremy, and he, I have two students who are working in the public safety building, and they are, they've spent a month in the 911 Center, a month with fire and EMS, getting actual hands-on training, and then a month with the sheriff's department. Thank you, Jason Smith. And they are getting hands-on, behind-the-scenes training, as if they were new trainees, not fully, if they were taking it as a job, but really close, and they are loving it. And then the last one, the bottom right, is, her name is London, and she's pictured there with Abigail Spanberger. She is doing an internship on law, and she, so she's, we don't, I was like, how do I do, create a law internship? I'm not sure, but I'm going to figure it out. So, she's like, I want to know how laws are made, and then I want to learn about different kinds of law. And my friends who are lawyers say, don't put her with one lawyer. She'll just be doing all this grunt work that'll turn her away from it. I was like, okay. So, one of the first things that we did is we went to the Capitol in Washington DC, so, and we actually got access to go to the gallery so that she could see bills being discussed right in front of her, which was fascinating. They were talking about some benefits for veterans, and so we had a great discussion. And she had an interview with Abigail Spanberger, where she created questions to ask her. And then she also met with Rebecca, who is her exec, now I can't remember her job title, but she works for Abigail. And she is a graduate of Orange County High School, so London also created a bunch of questions for her. So, now I've talked too long. You guys can kick me off. Any questions? Next.
That's awesome. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
All right. So, the second strategy that we have under this, this stakeholder engagement group is really all about valuing our families and partnering with our families and making sure that we're doing everything we can to include our families and our parents in our decision-making and in our practices. So, Laura, if you want to go back to the main website, we'll walk through the different action steps that we put under this, this strategy. So, the first, the first action step we had was to develop family engagement plans for each school and also for the division. So, two years ago, we had the opportunity to work with Dr. Constantino. There, we had a cohort group from Orange County with representatives from each school, as well as from central office, that participated in this professional development learning opportunity. We developed family engagement plans based on best practices, based on what the research says about how we should be developing relationships, practices that work, practices that don't work, and really getting feedback from our families in that, and how they want to be included, how they, you know, want to be continually engaged in the process of what we're doing with students. So, if we want to click on the surveys section of that tab up at the top, I'm going to talk about volunteering up at the, yeah, right there. So, one of the ways we engage families is seeking their feedback. So, we've had a lot of different topics that we've sought feedback from families on, from development of the school calendars to prefer time for parent-teacher conferences. Here is some examples of the feedback that we've gotten from those different surveys, and then also, you know, of course, that it's important to take that feedback and then use that to guide our decisions moving forward. So, scrolling back up just a little bit to the top tab there about advisory committees. We also have numerous different advisory committees, which is another way that we engage our families. So, from the business advisory committee to the superintendent has different advisory committees. Each school has, is working towards getting parent advisory boards at the individual school levels as well. The gifted advisory committee is very active, as well as the Title I parent advisory committees. So, if we want to keep going, Laura, down to the.
Participation in the parent advisory boards at individual schools. Do you know, I know I'm putting you on the spot. Do we have? Can you speak from a school perspective on some of that?
Sure, yeah.
I know COVID took a major hit to PTA, the participation rate. A lot of schools have had trouble getting that going, but by and large, almost all of them are back enrolling with the organizations. You typically will have a core group, and you always want to expand it beyond that. It starts out pretty wide, and then by the year's end, it contracts down to those four folks again, but.
So, you feel pretty good about the, at your school, the parent advisory?
At my school, I'm having to actually rebuild it right now, so I'm in the process of that.
Gotcha, okay.
But I could say, at other schools in the county, that they're functioning, but you always are going to want to expand it. And there's less participation at the secondary level than there is at the elementary level. But, at the same time, yeah, I think that parents see it sometimes as a fundraising arm for the school, and that's what we want to get away from, right? You want to get more toward the parent-teacher organization and collaboration, the dual feedback.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, the past two years, I've been vice president of PTA at Unionville. So, speaking from that, it's usually just a handful of us that come together for the, like, monthly PTA meetings. But in my experience, like, almost all the parents want to help if they are given a specific task or like know that there's something coming up. For example, you know, we have parent-teacher conferences. We want to make food for the teachers. We're doing a taco bar. Will you send in food? We have like way more food than the teachers could eat, because, you know, parents do want to help and support. They're not always able to come out like at 6:00 on a Monday night or something, but, and that kind of leads to the next point with volunteering, making sure that families know how they can support the schools, know how they can be involved. So, we created a volunteer link on the division website, as well as each school, individual school has a volunteer link, and it says specifically what things the parents could do, how they could volunteer. So, maybe it's helping in the classroom, maybe it's helping, you know, at lunch duty or whatever it would be. So, I think that's another way that we're just really trying to partner with families and let them know how they can be involved. So, if we want to go to the next action step there, so we talked about the surveys. Again, these are more examples of the surveys that we've put out. I thought it was really cool that when they hired principals in the last year, they put out to the parents, you know, give us feedback on what are you looking for in a principal? And I had never seen that done before, and I thought that was really a great way to get families input into what are they looking for with the leaders of their schools.
You liked that part?
I did. I, yeah, yeah. So, the next action step is the post-secondary, to post the curriculum guides on, for K-12 on the division website. And those have been posted for all the different content areas, as well as all the different grade levels. There's a ton of material there on that link that you can check out if you needed, and I think for a parent's, from a parent's perspective, it's very easy to find what you would be looking for. So, moving on to the next action step is evaluate the feasibility of family resource centers. So, this is something we're continuing to work on. We do have a lot of resources posted on our website, specifically under our special education and student services pages of the website. We also partner with the Piedmont Regional Educational Program, PREP, and they have a parent advisory resource center that families have access to if they're, if they're interested. We can connect families with that. We also have connections, we've tried to do, expand our partnerships with the community and getting flyers out, so that we're really helping parents to know what's available in the community. So, there's the link here to the community flyers page on the website as well. And then lastly, under this, this strategy is formalizing a process for volunteer opportunities, and I already talked about this a little bit, but again, the links are there for making sure families know how they can be involved and what they need to do to be able to volunteer. So, our third, if we would just keep, we'll keep on this page, and then we'll go back to the PowerPoint. Our third strategy, really, this one is focusing on developing partnerships between our community resources and our students and families. So, how can we connect our community resources for health and wellness, community development, and in order to promote student wellness and academic achievement? So, the first thing that we felt would be important to do is create a committee, a community engagement committee, that includes Chamber of Commerce, civic organizations, also local businesses. And so, for this, we have the business advisory committee that meets periodically, that has all of those organizations part of the business advisory committee, where they're able to come together and provide information and feedback and work collaboratively to, you know, plan things for our families and for our schools. The next action step is we have advertising volunteer experience for students. So, Ellen talked a little bit about some of the different programs. Here's another slide, and we can scroll down even more. So, she has done an amazing job of connecting students with volunteer experiences in the community. We also have a lot of our clubs, like the FFA and SCA, they connect students with volunteer opportunities as well. And one thing we've done for the past two years, two years, right?
Day of Service.
Yeah, the Day of Service, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with, where we all, one day, everybody in the school stops what they're doing and does a service project. And I think that's just an amazing way to highlight how powerful service, public service can be. The third action step under this category is collaborate with community organizations to provide parent workshops. And we actually have one tomorrow night that we are partnering with. We're hosting it at Lucas Grove Primary School in the cafeteria. This is put on by the Judge Morris and the Court Services Unit, and it's going to be the screened-out documentary. So, if anybody's interested in going, it's an awesome documentary. So, that's one example of how we're partnering with additional outside agencies to provide information for families. We're always definitely looking for more opportunities to do this as well. So, the fourth action step is collaborating with community organizations and medical professionals to increase access to mental health, dental services. professionals to increase access to mental health, dental services. And this, I feel like we do an amazing job with this. We have such a wonderful community that comes together to serve our families. Our health department offers immunization clinics. We had one most recently in August, and then there's more planned for the new year coming up. Lake of the Woods Lions comes in and does all of the vision and hearing screenings, which is amazing. Piedmont Regional Dental Clinic comes in twice a year and provides dental services for our students. We partner with Drummana, as well as Walden University, for their nursing students to come in and help with those screenings and things as well, also with the Nurse Aid Program. Dominion Power has provided lots of resources for personal hygiene items for our families, for students, and for the school nurses. The Sheriff's Department has provided-- NEMS provides the defibrillators and routinely checks those. And of course, our faith-based community provides a ton of resources for us, just kind of across the board for whatever families would need in Orange County. And the American Red Cross, earlier this school year, they did come and present to our admin staff meeting about what they do. And then each school's had a event, the American Red Cross Jump Rope for Heart, I think, is that what it's called? Yeah. Event. So lots of really great connections with our community agencies in serving our students for this action step. So now I'm going to pass it to-- back to Mr. Sedano.
And the fifth one, there's the calendar with all the school activities on one place, which has been a big help for families in terms of knowing what and when things are occurring. The fourth strategy details extracurricular offerings. And scenario, I'd say, we're, you know, out of all of these, our extracurricular offerings, we're in a pretty good spot in terms of what we offer our students. But we also, knowing that we have facilities that we need to make sure are up to date and safe, and that they can house those activities appropriately. And so the first action step is dealing with making sure our facilities are state-of-the-art. And Dr.-- not Dr., I'm sorry. Mr. Rutter is chairing our Blue Ribbon Panel of Individuals to Evaluate the Safety of Our Division's Facilities. This is a large group of individuals, including law enforcement and school employees, that are working together to ensure that our schools are meeting those needs. And I believe in December, as you had said, there'll be a presentation detailing this in more detail as to what the work of that committee. The second action step includes conducting school-level audits to ensure that our offerings and our extracurriculars are-- well, one, we know what is being offered, so we can make sure that there's a good offering and a representative sample across sites, so that's not opportunities here, but not there. But also to make sure that the offerings are reflective of our interests and that they're actually getting participants to-- that are worthwhile to offer it. We have-- the third action step is the Spirit Days in Orange County. We've done several over the past several years. And being a county with one high school, we're in a unique position. We want to be Orange County Hornets, all of us. We may start as Gordon Barber Bulldogs, Lightfoot Timberwolves, but ultimately, all of our students will hopefully become Orange County Hornets. And we want to have that pride in being Orange County Hornets. We've looked around at our neighboring counties and some of them and some of what they've done in terms of raising that level of pride. And we want-- and we know our students are proud of being OC, and we want to make sure that they feel that way and that we are all, you know, celebrating that unity all in one. All right. Moving on to the next one. This was mentioned on a previous one. Community flyers are out, so we can go on to the next, the fifth one. But community flyers are linked on our websites for families to access, so they know what's happening. And then finally, the expansion of extracurricular opportunities into all elementary schools to ensure that our children at the youngest levels also have opportunities. We're not talking about elementary school sports here, but we're talking coding clubs, book clubs, running clubs, character clubs. There's theater clubs at multiple elementary schools. So making sure that those extracurriculars are being not just focused on-- because we think of middle school and high school when we think of extracurricular activities, but we also want to have robust opportunities for our youngest students as well. All right, if we can go back to the presentation proper.
Nick, I do want to thank you and Ms. Burke, who have brought forward some ideas at the middle school level to-- in your budget request--
For sure.
--to ask for middle school volleyball, as well as soccer--
Yeah.
--for both boys and girls. So both of you brought forward unified requests. So I'd like to thank your athletic directors for coordinating with you all, and the more that we can offer, especially for our young ladies, is beneficial. And so I'd like to thank you, and that will be something that we really want to make sure that we can get the stipends in place and add those sports to our repertoire of middle school.
Yeah, and I think, just to mirror that, with the volleyball in particular, that's a gap in our--
Yes.
--in our offerings. I know Colpepper has programs for the youth, as well as some surrounding counties, but so getting a middle school, we've had tremendous interest, too. Ninety-some students tried out for our club last year. So, yeah, they want to play, and they want to do stuff. And the soccer programs are very popular in Orange County as well, so we threw that forward, too. And we'll see where we go with that. But we did meet for our budget request today, at least Dr. Hornick and I did, and that was discussed. So just to tie this all together, our action-- our strategic plan action step was robust. It was broad, and it covered all areas from student health and wellness, family and parent engagement, extracurricular activities, facilities, and the gamut. And it was kind of that catch-all, but family and student engagement is an area where we have to be great. And we have to make sure that we're thinking strategically about how we're engaging our families and how we're empowering our families, and not just saying, "Come get, but here it is." And so that work will hopefully benefit us for years to come. And if you have any questions, we will take those now.
Renee, let me have you highlight one more thing. We talked about one of the examples that Ellen gave with Seamus, who's been working at-- been working with our 911 operators. And so Renee, I think, I know we spoke about this at Business Advisory on Friday, but I think it's something that the whole board-- it's a good opportunity to make him aware of another facet of our career programming that we are going to add here in the--
So I met with him after my Business Advisory, because we are interested in creating a course at the high school for the communication center, so that our students can leave high school with that certification and go right into working in the call center, the 911 call center. And they brought the curriculum, and I'm going to submit it to the state to try to get it approved as an official CTE program. But if it's not an official CTE program, then we will just have it as a Orange County--
Local elective.
--CTE program. But we are very excited to bring that to our students as--
So no other locality has--
There is a course that the state has approved, but it doesn't follow the same thing that they do with their certification, as a different certification. So I'm going to try to get theirs approved, because our person here is certified to teach this, like, teach this one, but--
Got it.
--the state, you know, said this one was good. So they're very similar, so I'm thinking that they'll probably approve it.
And if not, we will navigate it by-- we will make it an elective.
Local CTE elective, yeah. Mm-hmm. So very excited about that. They brought that idea to me and said, "Hey, we'd like to do what our EMT and FIRE get to do. You know, we would like to do this as well." And having that student there doing such a good job--
I think it was spearheaded by Ellen, your work on getting him there.
Well, and there's a young lady there who's actually working. She's the one that actually started everything, because she's now almost finished with her certification, and she started.
And it was really nice at the Economic Partners Group meeting last Thursday in the eastern end with Mansour and his group, Deputy Kessner actually brought Seamus with him and had an opportunity to talk a little bit about what he's doing at the 911 center and the opportunity. So it was really good to have a student there telling members of the interested parties, particularly in the eastern end of the county, the business community, what he was doing and how that internship worked. So it was really good to hear directly from him.
It's awesome.
It was. Thank you.
Any other comments, Board?
Terrific, terrific work, absolutely. And you guys took, you know, a strategic plan and kind of put it into motion a little bit, and, you know, just wonderful. Seeing the young people have the opportunity to get out there and kind of rub elbows with, you know, people and understand, you know, a little bit of experience can give someone, a young person, the passion, you know? Well, you know, maybe this is for me, or this isn't for me. So those opportunities, you know, to me are priceless. So-- and you guys did really well on the pictures and everything. I see Bree back there, so. Nick, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I made a note to share some of this information, because I wasn't aware, but I do appreciate, especially during my tenure, how much the parent engagement involvement has increased. I mean, it's probably a hundredfold when I was first running. So it's definitely appreciated with this board member, and I'm sure with the community at large. You know, the more that we can get families altogether engaged in their students' upbringing and education, the more that student is going to thrive. So that's much appreciated.
I think having a brand-new website also has helped, because everything's just a lot more accessible and beautiful. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
It's a great team. Thank you, guys.
And Nick, I like what you said about putting it-- giving it to them instead of expecting them to come and find it. I just think that's a really great step to take and--
Philosophy of efficacious parents. We need to-- they need to be empowered to know what to do and to believe in themselves to help their child, or else--
Super.
But the other thing I wanted to say, too, is that, and not to beloviate, to use your word, is we have a labor shortage, and we have thousands of kids that we're educating, and we should be, you know, moving them toward community, you know, opportunities in our community and employment in our community. So it all goes hand in hand with furthering, you know, Orange County as a whole. These are the future citizens and workers of our county.
Well said.
I do. I just want to say I am so proud to be part of Orange County School Division and so appreciative of the passion and the hard work and the thinking outside of the box to give our students so many amazing opportunities in whatever direction they may choose. So thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Guys, that's very well done. Bree, again, thank you very much for your work on this, and even when your hours are up, I think we have some other things if you want to keep working with us. We'd like to engage you, not to give more work, but to engage with us more in this realm. Yes, more opportunity.
Judy's really good at that. She likes to engage.
And Madam Vice Chair, thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, so we are down to item 8A on our agenda, which is me. Piedmont Regional Education Program, the PREP report. And I honestly can't provide much, because almost all of our October 30th meeting was in closed session, because we're still searching for a facility, and all of that is in the works. So stay tuned, that's all I can say. We'll meet again, I think, in December. All right, and Ms. Quintern?
So as we've talked about briefly this evening, we have two different lab schools, one's at Drummana preparing teachers, and then we also have an Academy of Technology and Innovation at Mary Washington, which I sit on the board of. We had a very fruitful meeting. Quarter one was completed. Parents also have begun their PTO there. So that's exciting. Their first fundraiser was being planned, and they're getting their volunteer clearance paperwork together. Approval to qualify for a Library of Congress surplus book, so they're looking to expand their library. They're also looking to provide musical opportunities, even though it's a technology school, they want to make sure that they have a well-rounded education, so they want to try to figure that part out. They've also formed a student council. We voted to increase the professional development days for the calendar for staff there. I know that was one thing that we've heard here at this board, so I wanted to make sure that we gave especially a brand-new school with brand-new staff, brand-new curriculum, as much opportunity to plan and grade and everything else in between. Spring break has been an interesting thing, trying to coordinate between multiple different counties. We suggested that calendars be planned two years in advance, so that way maybe if one is set at Mary Washington, the other schools might be able to work better together to coordinate their calendars, because it also taxes transportation staff. So I want to recognize Justin Sarver's hard work in getting kids where they need to be in all different locations. He's the man.
Justin.
But the calendar didn't quite get there yet. I think they're going to try to propose it at least a little bit earlier, so we can get ahead of that. Next year's plans, they're going to be doing a chem lab creation, recruitment schedule, lottery platform build-out, facilities upgrades, surveys and exit interviews. There are some students that chose not to stay at Mary Washington, and then there's others, there's lists of kids waiting to get in. Right now, it looks like there's about seven students. I don't know how many of them may or may not be Orange County students, but seven total would like to go back to traditional high school. Side note, it was mostly the kids whose parents desired them to be at the school, and it's a little bit different than what they're used to. But they are going to be growing. This year, again, it's just freshman class, so they're going to be the-- always the upper classmen. So they're starting as freshmen, learning how to become high schoolers, and they're going to be 10th grade, and we're going to have more students coming in for 9th grade. And I believe 10th grade is going to be where they're going to do their cutoff for new admittance. So because of the caliber of educational opportunities there, they want to make sure that they're not setting any students up for failure. So 10th grade's going to be the last grade that you can start as a new student. And it looks like tomorrow, they're going to be-- some of them are going to be participating in the legislative breakfast. We are not in the rest of the district, so Orange County is the only one that's considered Northern Virginia, believe it or not, and the rest of them are, believe, central. And so they're going to have their legislative breakfast. And our next meeting is not going to be held until January of next year. And that's all, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. We are down to 9A, future agenda items. Anything from anyone?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to request, again, that we invite our student council representative to provide us a report. And to confirm, are we going to have the retreat--
December 13th. I got the date.
And that's going to regarding governance and policies?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
As I understand it, yes.
And then just a point of order, probably to talk more about it at that point. But on the future agenda items, I don't want to think-- you know, originally, I put it out there, but my thought was that it was something we talk about, and then we thumbs up, so that there are more than just an individual requesting information or requesting the superintendent to do some follow-up action. So I just wanted to say, I think we need to just, you know, that's not an action item, it's just a thumbs up, "Sounds like a great idea," or if it's not something that more than one person is interested in talking about at that point, then we don't put that work on him. So again, that's my hope and intent, and we can talk about it more--
I think the student council rep is a great idea.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, that's good.
Mr. Rickett, anything?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Quintern?
No, not at this time.
All right. We will move on to item 9B, board member comments. Anything that has not already been shared from anyone?
No, good, thank you.
Oh, yes, I did. I hosted a town hall. Mr. Sedano, thank you for being there. It was rather small, but I think it was-- might have been the first in Orange County, I don't know. But I felt like it was very successful. There's a lot of good back and forth between my constituents and others, and also Ms. Harrington joined myself as well. And so it was a good time to be out with the community and have some good conversations back and forth. So recommend that to the board if you have opportunity.
And I appreciate being invited by Ms. Quintern to participate and be able to have a conversation back and forth and providing different opinions on perspectives and priorities. So thank you.
All right. And I just wanted to commend the Division on the Veterans Day celebration. I was not personally able to attend because of my schedule, but when I saw the videos, I literally wept. It just-- I mean, it was just amazing to see these kids with their flags waving and veterans speaking, and I'm just really, really proud to be part of a division that celebrates our veterans the way that we do here. So thank you, everybody who was involved in that. It was awesome.
The videos were great.
Yeah.
They were really good, yeah.
All right. If that's all, I believe it's time to move into closed session. Mr. Rickett, you have the certification or the--
Yes.
--motion?
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene an enclosed meeting for the following. Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, and Retirement of Employees. and retirement of employees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We are now in closed session.
Do we need a vote, Madam Vice Chair?
Oh, sorry. I forgot. Do we want to go into closed session?
Yes.
Aye.
Almost had it.